I have not written minutes from the executive staff yet.
I did.
She did.
I did.
Oh, you did.
I still.
Okay. Is they will be attached to the agenda?
There's no law in.
I'm just telling you.
I will be happy to wait until. Just so you can see, Jeff.
I've I've got it here.
Oh, okay.
I just hadn't.
Oh, that's good. All right, then we will just deal with the many looks.
Excuse me.
The minutes. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes from June 13 as written? A second? Are there any changes required? In that case, all in favor, yes, opposed, abstained?
All for there.
Thank you. Okay. We do not have any public's director's report.
So we have. We have watched him with.
Yeah, it's great.
And so. Usually it's happened. They're caused by a very strong bias. Very strong. As. Even if they have. Accept the. And has been. So same strong. Lost it out first. So that's interesting. Has been. And a really, really huge way has been.
She did give. She did the young adult. Yeah.
Yes, she. So. Stories. The signal. Yeah, she was awesome. Frank. That it's here. We're not around here. Yes. That. Excellent. And then. Of that. The latter. Which is. Wanted of South. Pally connection, which is. So they have. Let's say grand. Pally as well. So I can consider. And some of the. Stand. Is still very much. If. Oh, we do. Yes. Grand. So how this. We actually. So talking about that. We actually. Just now. Is there a. I said. Want. Was the. Scratch. Here. Still, they. We believe that. Stop right there. This one day. After it is better. So. It's down. And that's going to. Better. See others. We're asking. Close to.
Was it? Did his attendance was comparable to the wedding?
No, no. The disruption.
Yeah.
I do a lot of that. You know, we only ask. And now. Neither of us. That.
Okay.
I think. That was coming in and it's up through. And maybe under the steam. Yeah, I mean, those are also. So. That. Yeah. This. That was.
Is there someone like one that's.
I think they want to. So I think. Location and they asked. So. He said, she didn't do it. She didn't. Stage. Asking. So it was fine. And didn't. Cause. She. How it's down. She. Yeah. Their stuff. I said. But I didn't want that because it. That. Something.
Plus, I mean, you were paying for somebody to be here when the eye wasn't open. You know, whereas you could have shifted her. Open hours.
We, you know, as. Looks at the program. So. Kids can. Isn't that different?
Yes.
There.
Yeah.
Yeah. Was that. That necessarily. Children. Who I asked. For the. Services. But it will be better. Because. Some. Some.
Hmm.
Most of what is done like. Those that come from the. Fashion. Look at this kind of the fashion. It's something recognition. So. The children's like. We're still. It's. Early. So we haven't. We haven't got. We haven't. Most of the job. To sit down and staff. And have a conversation about. Alteration. That we already did. And also talk about. Any other changes that. Staff schedule. Roles. And so. We try to get. This week. Something. To.
Patrick, is that a full-time position or like what is? What is the position as it currently?
Yes. Currently.
Benefited? Okay.
So. So. So this. Is there anything?
And what is the YA position currently? Julius Pauls. That's also 27. Is it 27 benefited as well? It's same. With the same.
Right. That's that's what I was.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there anyone internally that? Is this an opportunity? Anytime someone leaves for me, I'm like, okay, it's an opportunity to re-envision or to offer someone an opportunity if they want it.
So. Same. It's obviously. And. But that's. Actually, basically, this is. So that's kind of like, wow. You know, who is in you and what? What? More more best. The configuration of how previously. Positions. We always envision them to be much longer. And that being. It's very significant. And have certain lost opportunity for. For us to have people working on. Services. The law. We have. Be able to. I'm hoping that we can. We have. Follow that. And. We're. Extremely rare, but this is.
Yeah.
Well. So.
But they have like a youth services team.
If someone wants.
Then you have the money left over.
Something.
That's what we.
Yeah. Yes. Mm hmm.
So, yeah, I want to have. You know. What. And to. Yes. How Julie has been doing. Building. Her.
Both.
Yes.
She hasn't stopped leaving. You know.
Yeah. Right, because we are not limited by headcount. We're only limited by budget. So you know what the budget is? And if you can repurpose it in a different way and end up with, you know.
A just mix.
Yeah, a better mix of of people that will fit what our current staff is looking in opportunity.
Two things. I did have a conversation with Julia and said, did you know that there's a children's librarian position available? She's like, yes, I did. And she said she really wanted to focus on. The young adults and making access to. Fostering access for kids who might be sort of trying to phase out or whatever, to make sure that the transition from children's to YA, which. And because I had had the opportunity to see her in action when women was on vacation or otherwise out. And certainly since she left. I think she has. From what I have seen, she seamlessly took on the responsibilities. No, does she ask some of the parental units or grandparental units, oh, what song are we supposed to do now? Yes. But. She. I she deserves a pat on the back.
We. Doing that.
You think he.
For. You know. Because it is. It is. Asking. She is. I'm sorry for this. Like, what?
Right. Okay. No, that's not her at all.
But what one person will be like that they.
True.
It's not.
I'm not going to do it or I need to know when it ends or whatever. No, but she's. I just think she has. She has been great for staff. And I think she has done an excellent job with, you know. Even if she's in the workroom and there are two people that are sitting there helping her cut out whatever so she can make whatever when the little kids get there. Um.
Yeah, she has. They're. We're all joined soon. And. They. We are a little.
Yes.
Right. And it's really. Good stuff. That's. It would be. It would be a big help right now. Have someone. Step on. Yeah, but I still. Thankfully. The. Yeah. But it is. It's. Figure out. Where's the. Where's the.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
So it's a big. It's whatever something like this happens. It's always. Yes. You know, it's a great thing. So. Take a look at this. Operators. Right next. Region. He's gone.
In case you all don't know, Japanese is Julia's first language.
Oh. Very cool.
And I've heard her chatting with several families when she comes in. Today, she was standing at the circ desk and she was helping a gentleman who was looking for genealogy or archival, whatever kind of stuff. I mean, as far as I can tell, she has the skills to do lots of things.
Okay. She has a special. That. She.
Yeah.
It's great. Yeah. That's a long. Small sound. And.
Yeah. She did.
Okay. That's that's.
Yeah.
Takes years to. Go to action. She's very. And just a lot of people. Right. A lot of them is the largest. So that's very.
She creates as many of the YA types in the little ones. My name. She may or may not remember the grown-up's name. Oh, it's Jack's grandmother. Yeah, but I know who you're talking about, Jack. Um. Just. She's fabulous. Thanks.
Uh, what else? We have several. You have several. Sorry. Function. Stew. How. User friendly. Interface. Brings. You know, there's their company. Inside. It's definitely.
Wait.
They created. Experience. Amazon. It was not going to. You said something. These are. There's this. See. How. And how. You know. You know. There. There. Science. So that's going to be very. Functionally exciting. So that is. Supposed to be. Functionality. To build. Site. Through this file. And I have. Since the. Program. And. The. To. Someone to see that we're saying. I could be. Maybe. Right. That they. Considering. Here. That. That specifically. So. How they follow. The. Really now. They have something to. Us. Next. That's going to be. A. Huge. Damage. And I did. Sound. To. This. It's there. Directors. What's that? And we have. So.
I'm sorry.
So that means. And. Ask. Very sensitive. It's a huge. Detroit. Relax. So. So we'll see how this evolves. So. Long session. So. They're.
That's great. Will this have an impact on our contribution to CDA doors? Assuming that the cost will be shared?
So. Going to. Not go offline for the service, which. They're going to walk them down. It's. Because they get. We also. Brands. State. So just. You know, the child. Services. Every year. There's. Their. They're. Want. So. They announced. Grandma is. This one.
Hmm, okay.
So. It's going to be. Less. One. It's all.
Yes, okay.
But this year. Actually, we was. And. That's. Almost. For the end of the system. I have lost. The. Medicines. Um. So that's.
Last year was six, one, seven.
What?
Six, one, seven, four. It's 200.
It's worth it. Oh, I'm just saying. No, I know, but I'm just saying I took one extra dollar. Right.
No, I mean, just because the number was in front of me.
That's. It's. That was. There.
Sure.
Yes, that's an operation that just.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have. The. That I want to mention, which is, and it's not other. We have to have a contact. The. Hamden Hampshire Conservation District. This year. They don't touch. The site. Or their office is on. Is actually. On. You said. They were looking for a place to hold a. Their first. Hangover. Their first. I'd say. This summer. There. The sale is online. Distribution. Seven. One. Their. Four. Seven. Forty minutes. So. Sale is part of the. The. History. Changing. It's not. Book. Last. Last. So. And. Do. History. They can use. Congress. This is. Last. Day. They're not. That.
I think this is the person that reached out. Remember that person that reached out and said, hey, can you make a garden?
So.
Oh, okay.
This is real.
Hmm.
Did they? So I can tell.
Hamden Hampshire Conservation District. Mm hmm.
Yeah. So they're looking to do that, but also. Say. The. Shops. The. Cars. As well. Cars. And. Another. This. This. That. Is. Preparing to establish. Stand. By. Yes, sir. I'll. Just. After. He is personally.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm.
District. So. I mean. But. College. School. Last. It's. Why? I mean, it's not. Well. Looking native. Parents. Like. Space. They are. You know, wanting to. Down. What's there? Makes.
Oh, wow.
Also.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm. Yeah. Oh, okay.
So I don't. I didn't. I don't.
Listen.
Yeah.
About. You know, possibility of. It's. Oscar. So. Possibility. We're having some. Other. Over. Areas.
Yeah.
Also, the seating areas outside.
Yeah.
So. So. We're. Into. Just. Interesting. Very. There. We're. Like. Actually. Have some. But in short term, the question is, for you, are you comfortable with? Austin. The site. On. Or. Something like. That.
The weekend. Guessing it's the Saturday.
I was just looking.
At that.
I'm just looking at that week in the calendar.
It is. It is.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you're.
Yeah.
I think that sounds good.
I think that's a great opportunity to.
Yeah.
Like, just get more people at the library.
And. Yeah. To. Off the. Program. See your.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. On Saturday. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh.
That's a good idea.
Ability. That's.
Yeah.
I'm not saying.
Right. Yeah.
Essentially, yeah, they'll be.
Or if they did coffee that day.
I don't know if you were not eating or space.
Well, I think, but even if you had it out at the back, because I think, you know, if they put a sign out front and directed people to the back, rather than have a bunch of plants out on the front lawn where people would be like, where do I park the?
Yeah. I think the traffic flow would be great.
Right.
Or.
I think. And. I think that would be awesome. Well, we'd have to involve senior center.
So.
But if the weather. A little bit. Who are sort of monitored would be able to stand. Whatever. So maybe.
Yeah, it's the only thing that is.
That day. Yeah.
So. But yeah. I have one.
That sounds really interesting, yeah?
It's. I didn't. Place. It was.
And the 2022 folks. So. So we now have the 2022 folks as well. Yeah. Did you want to? That was pretty much it. So we're just gonna like, you know, I know part of it. We're gonna have a maybe a subcommittee of that today. I think it's, you know, we wanted to jump on this while it was hot.
Patrick, can I ask one quick question just because I don't know about the budget stuff?
Um, because this was year end, I actually looked at it. So where. The services and supplies went over budget, but the salaries were under budget.
So this is. So. This is the final weeks started. This is for.
Oh, okay.
Why?
Yeah.
2030. And so some of these things are.[1686.71] Still. And I have. Would say. We're hoping to bring that down. To. Just to.
Okay.
And as far as the sales.
Right. Well, my question was not, oh, that you. Were negative here and you were positive here, but it was. I didn't think you were able to move dollars from one category to the other. Just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, I think that.
Okay.
Yeah, where, where this is concerned. The, you know, you've come from the past. It's the long, the sad round. Things that were. Which is already. What. Lots of things. Two hundred dollars.
Sure. No, that's not.
And so. In the early days. Tried to do this now. Yeah. And you have to. Well, it's easier to do this. Just. Have to. And. Yeah, somewhere else. Which was. So. Was one. Sir. Two. Yeah. Just. And just have. Supply chains there. Yeah.
They're on a boat sometimes, yeah.
And they, they know. Certainly. But it just wasn't. It's still on. So. It's a lot. We're. All. It's easier to just.
Last question. Do you need? Help with any exhibits, what you did?
The one. So how do you hear us then? Your best. That's sort of. Is. You have to be careful to the. Into the trust. Save them. But. But that. Is that. You know. Wire. But that. So usually, well, it's. The person. Available. And to be there without. You know, by any of their. People there. And that's why.
And now that I know it occurs, because that's usually when I go to the Senior Center, I won't suddenly be worried and say, oh, my God, what's happening at the library like I did last year.
Oh, fire.
Yes, because. All of the things were there and it's like.
Yeah.
But Jerry Berg wasn't there, so it was probably okay. But I didn't put all those pieces together at the time.
Yeah, I think that's really the only one I. Personal. Outside.
Anybody else have any questions? And this or anything else? In that case, bird organization and meeting schedule for the coming. Year. Let's do the easy one first. Are. Second Tuesdays good for everyone? Shall we? Continue to do that? Okay. That's the easy part. So you need a chair, and a vice chair, and a clerk.
I'm happy to run into the position of court.
An I for vice chair.
I'm already taking the notes. I assume no one's gonna. Try to sabotage. If anyone else wants it.
I don't know, I'm gonna focus for that one.
No one ever pays for that one.
I'm not gonna nominate myself.
I'd like to nominate.
Okay, agree.
Anybody else wanna be nominated for anything? So. We have a slate of. Nathan for chair, Ken for vice chair, and Dante Ben. Clerk. Do we have a motion?
Can I move on my own? Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to move forward. Slate.
Is that good? All favor. You may. Thank you. Um. The subcommittees. Do you want to talk about our meeting or? Do you want to?
That meeting to discuss. We think to go into evaluation. Other people's evaluations. Are in the bottom. Moving down. What. Who like and don't like. That was. That's my thing. But we. Came up with. So. Had. To. Do. Test.
I'm a little confused. So are we talking about the subcommittees? Like, who's gonna be on the subcommittees or do we move to a different item? Did I miss something? I'm sorry.
Well, we're on board subcommittees. And. We just talked about. The director's evaluation because Susan and I have met and nobody else. Volunteered to be on it. So. We have gone ahead and done a little bit of work. If there is someone who wants to participate. In any of the things and we don't have their name or. Do not have someone to serve as the liaison to the friends. Because it had been Moine and if someone has to take that on. Allison and Jess are going to. Feedback. Yes. Going to their meetings.
Go to their meetings to give. A sword. Just.
And then reciprocally report to us things going on. Friends. That's. No one.
They could, but that's. Control.
We could.
It's an interesting idea.
How often do they meet together?
I will say. Having been new and seeing what's like. Kind of easy and useful for a new person to try to. But like. If you were the liaison to friends, you would see like a whole nother aspect like to bring to the table. Anyway, just throwing that out there that I learned a lot when I went to other type meetings, like, like, just as a new person. You know. I'm, I'm not saying you have to, I just was. You'd been quiet over there. So. And then it was a little, honestly, you're like, where do I know? How can I volunteer? But it's, you know, it's a pretty straightforward job. You know?
It's, it's. Very. Better.
Thank you, John. Um. I would also sort on the capital. So. Is there? Anything else? Subcommittees.
Just ask the question. Staff.
Well, we have asked if you were gonna hold a staff meeting. And so. We're hoping to have. A few minutes of time and wanted to. Provide them with. Let them know what some of our thoughts were and to ask them. For. Right. So they can. Think about. When might be able to do that? And, and another thought is. You know, I realize that everybody isn't. Always in the building at the same time. But. I think it would be reasonable to. You know, if someone were. They. If we could do it even by Zoom. To make it easier to include everyone without asking to drive hearing.
Usually it's, usually the person that. Who wants to. Karen. And Karen was.
Well, if. If it requires additional time of hours. There are funds that. Could certainly cover that because I'm not expecting. Right. No. That's. Right?
I have a helpful campaign question. Um, just so I don't step on like any of the stuff since I have been working for a little while. Uh, has anyone? One question that could lose a ways. Of what was the trustee's role in. Has anyone researched back with? Masport Library Missioners? Or? Is it? Yeah, but it, it was very good.
So maybe they. I. Shout. They have some. Trustee. Person. Basically said, I can't. No, it was like, yeah, I, we should. And asked for. Instead, I. apologize. Karen.
What we have to do because there is a confusing point that some. Libraries. You know. That trustee is kind of one of that. Just a little bit confused. I'm, it's really. And it's a really important job. And so I just want to do some research if that's a pair. You know, the trustee's role.
I think finding more information is always a good idea. No, I appreciate your chance to talk.
Yeah. Okay, I'll start again.
Is there anything else we need to discuss? Or. Oh.
Sorry.
No?
I just wanted to let all of you know because I related though. Um, Ed Paterson says that I have. There's a movie called The Right to Read. That I certainly watched and reviewed is about the science of reading. Which if you're an education. Very good topic right now. Um, I researched Anthony. And what happens. Stand. But school districts are converting. Starting with eighty. The science of reading. I really want to show this movie. Directors are having this. Shoving here. But didn't want to go against anything that Anthony was doing, but in terms of school district. Annie Pesci does have a grant to bring in the science of reading and is really excited. So. I also. That's why. Is an educational psychologist. And is. My. Resident. I know. Who's doing work on the science of reading, so. I'm hoping to put together. In the fall. Some kind of. And. Discussion groups. I'm meeting Mara on Friday. Annie, um, has already. Have given her, you know, blessing and will, will kind of. Join with us. The question is whether, you know, how we take it. So Mara and I can come in strong a little bit. Uh, I do want to say. I got nervous because I'm used to having that little budget. Wasn't cheap, but. So. That. So, um, and when I got a lot of some events, like, we have money. We can do things like this.
So, and this would be something like, we have all that. Who's a scientist, right? Like, so we talked about bringing science-based curriculum to, you know.
So. And have, you know, people help us be move along, but I just wanted to update you all.
Um, so, is the movie called Science Reading?
Called The Right to Read.
The Right to Read, that's what I thought, then I got confused. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Another thing I sort of mentioned already. But forgot was. Um, there is a new. Email address. Well, actually, a resurrected email address. On the website, so it doesn't go to Yahoo that nobody could remember the password to anyway. Or to the Gmail account that we have sometimes, or most recently used for the founder's wall. So. I set the password. For the account, it's in Outlook. Um. I actually tested it and it did go there. And there are other. Town things about mostly IT. That have shown up. In the account and I am happy to. Share the password. With. Anyone who wants to. Access it or use it or. Just have it. If everybody wants it, I will send it to you. If. You all think that that is something that is best routinely checked by a single person, then. We can do that as well.
Yeah, I don't want access to it. I mean, honestly, like, I mean, I think if, if one person and probably the chair has access to it. But if, you know, if I needed to send out an email for this community feedback project, which I swear is gonna take off any second now. Um, if I wanted to use that email address to send something, to send out a survey, then I would just work with you rather than just. That's all. You know, monitoring the what the email address.
We have the other one that we have used in the past that has a lot of stored information on it, which is the Gmail account that we started when we were building. So we had people sign up, do you want to be updated on the building project? We use that to send out our surveys, et cetera. So we do have a separate, um, you know, we've used that for the capital campaign, et cetera. So.
But if you were going to do an online survey, that might be preferable because then you can make one. In Google.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's, yeah.
So that is also, does exist there. Used it. You know, not for like. Typical, hey, contact the trustees about this, but more about the, you know, capital campaign. The fundraising, the building events, et cetera.
Sure.
Yeah. That's what we use to, to invite people to the. Events.
No, that's fine. I just. There is a, an official library trustee at padley dot whatever. So. And that is. Because after one trustee mentioned that, someone got in contact with her, I was thinking, oh. There should be. An easy way for. Folks to be in touch. So. Susan was the one who had. Nudged about that. Oh, I'll go. So. We are all set. Is there anything else to take? Session? Sure.
So if I'm. So. Tuesday. That's the week of today. Oh.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's really. Yeah, he's really, yeah. He's really, uh, it's. You know.
I have been in touch with the chair of the friends because they left. An envelope in the trustee mailbox, which is a letter of appreciation. With regard to their workings, Patrick. And I will share that with all of you. Um, and I subsequently. Wrote back to thank them. And I asked. If he had done anything particularly marvelous to prompt this. And it was, no, just more a general appreciation and then it got copied to the whole board and. And it was, no, just more a general appreciation and then it got copied to the whole board and anyway. I will share it with all of you, but I will let. Her know. So what's her first name, Susan? Sharon. I'm gonna start with us. Andres. I will let her know that. You will be. The liaison. And I will copy he one.
Or. When she will do a presentation.
Yeah, it's a totally low pressure. That's why I suggested it for the new person because it's really no pressure.
So, so it sounds like.
In that case. I would like to make a motion that we. Go into executive session for the. The minutes from. The board's July third. Meeting. With the intention of not returning to open session afterward.
Like a second?
We each need to vote. Individually.
Yes.
I say yes.
I.
Yes.
I say yes.
Okay.